Buenas tardes a todos. Y los invitamos al comité de la Comisión de la Agencia de Agricultura y del Congreso Colin Peterson, a la reunión de la sala de audiencia. ¡Qué gran turnout hoy! Es fantástico tener un buen turnout. Desafortunadamente, la razón por la que la gente está saliendo no es tan maravillosa. Tenemos momentos difíciles en el país de las agriculturas. Y he estado haciendo esto muchos años. Hemos pasado por algunos altos y bajos. De hecho, Jim Nichols está aquí algún día, un buen amigo mío. Y él sabe cómo fue en los años 80 cuando teníamos algunos momentos realmente difíciles. Ciertamente estamos teniendo esos momentos ahora mismo. Colin Peterson es una voz terrificante para la agricultura en este país y para este distrito de Minnesota. Y estamos muy afortunados de tenerlo en el Congreso. Lo he visto en acción. De verdad trabajará con todos. Y eso es lo que se trata. Creo que eso es lo que todos queremos. Queremos personas que van a trabajar juntos para hacer el trabajo y no jugar política. Simplemente hacer el trabajo. Y eso es lo que Colin hace cada día en Washington. También no tiene miedo de decirlo como es. A veces te metes en problemas por eso, pero está bien. Y también hace un trabajo terrificante en eso. También hoy Aaron Zeimer va a ser nuestro moderador. Él es el director de noticias de KMHL en Marshall. Y queremos agradecer Titan Equipment y KMHL por hacer disponible el feed de internet en todo el estado de Minnesota y en todo el país hoy. Y apreciamos que estén con nosotros. Y una vez más, Colin, genial tenerlos aquí. Y Aaron, voy a pasar la palabra a usted para hacer la introducción.
Gracias, Lynn. Wow, qué gran turnout hoy. Como dijo Lynn, esto es una gran cosa de la que estamos aquí para hablar hoy con la actual situación de las agriculturas y con el semestre de plantación y cosas así. Así que, solo por curiosidad, ¿cuántos de ustedes tienen cultivos en el suelo ahora mismo? ¿Cuántos de ustedes tienen todos sus cultivos en el suelo? Eso es casi lo que pensamos. Así que sí, ha sido un semestre. No hay duda de eso. Un par de personas a las que queremos agradecer antes de empezar. Quiero agradecer a nuestros socios de la transmisión por este evento. Titan Machinery aquí en Marshall. Apreciamos su apoyo. También apreciamos Ag Country Financial por unirse a nosotros aquí en la transmisión también. Así que gracias a ambos por ayudar a hacer posible la transmisión hoy. Y un gran gracias a Bello Caccina por organizar este evento aquí. Sarah y su personal hacen un trabajo maravilloso. Tienen un buffet de almuerzo después de esto. Así que si quieren quedarse, hay una barra de pasta completa, una barra de ensalada completa que van a tener justo en el restaurante después. Así que solo queremos agradecerles. Y si quieren quedarse y ser parte de eso, sé que certamente les apreciaría. Muchas gracias, Lynn. Y ahora vamos a empezar. Le dejaremos a nuestro Congreso Colin Peterson aquí en un segundo. Si tienen una pregunta y están en la audiencia, hay un micrófono atrás allí para nuestra audiencia en Facebook y en TV y en radio. Pedimos que lo lean a través del micrófono. Yo también estaré ayudando a moderar algunas preguntas también. Así que sin más, aquí está el Congreso Peterson.
Sí, vamos a, en lugar de tener un montón de declaraciones formales y demás, vamos a abrir esto para la gente. Espero que podamos mantenerlo bajo control y no estar demasiado fuera de la mano aquí, pero veremos. Y sé que todos quieren saber las especificas de lo que está pasando aquí para que puedan tomar sus decisiones. Y desafortunadamente, probablemente os desapareceré. No voy a poder deciros exactamente, pero puedo daros alguna indicación de dónde creo que esto está llegando. Así que no sé dónde comenzar exactamente, pero voy a volver a cuando hicimos el proyecto de la ley agrícola. Traté de hacer que esos tipos mejoren el neto de seguridad en la ley agrícola. Y he argumentado todo el año pasado que esta ley agrícola no va a ser adecuada para lo que estamos enfrentando. Y creo que la gente ahora ve que tenía razón. Podríamos, ya saben, no sé dónde encontrarían el dinero, pero ya saben, estamos encontrando ahora, ya saben, 14 billones de dólares de este último contrato que van a hacer. Y teníamos, ya saben, 12 billones la última vez. Saben, si tuviéramos ese dinero, podríamos haber obtenido los precios de la tienda de maíz por más de cuatro dólares, ya saben, y las harinas hasta 10.50. Y tus banqueros estarían mucho más felices si tuvieran ese tipo de situación que la que tienen. Así que intentamos. Fui un poco una voz de crédito en ese proceso y me dijeron por el señor Roberts y el señor Conaway que, bueno, no tenemos ningún dinero y no podemos hacer eso. Y los agricultores de Iowa insistieron en reestablecer la ARC, lo cual costó mucho dinero, lo cual no creo que haga mucho bien. Pero de todos modos, así que intentamos. Pero al final del día, tomé una decisión de que iba a hacer lo que fuera necesario para hacer que esta ley agrícola fuera cumplida. Y no fue fácil. Y garantizo esto, si no hubiera estado en la mesa, no tendríais una ley agrícola hoy. Puedo deciros eso por hecho. Así que tuve que sufrir un montón de cosas que no quería hacer. Saben, tuvieron que sufrir algo que no querían hacer, pero logramos hacerlo. Y fue un milagro. Y justo al final, y la mayoría de la gente no sabe esto, pero todo estaba funcionando. Y fui a mi caucus y me dieron una ovación de pie en mi caucus por los demócratas. Y la razón fue porque los republicanos abandonaron las cosas de la stampa alimentaria que estaban tratando de hacer. Así que los republicanos hicieron algo que no he podido hacer en 30 años en la política. Me hicieron un héroe con los demócratas liberales. De todos modos, así que tuvimos a los demócratas en el asiento y a los republicanos, ya saben, principalmente en el asiento, excepto por el caucus de libertad. Y pensé que todo estaba bien. Así que vamos al comité de reglas el viernes por la noche. Y, ya saben, Conaway y yo, por primera vez en seis meses, estamos en la misma página. Estamos diciendo buenas cosas sobre el otro. Saben, todo parece bien. Vengo al piso el siguiente mañana y el Conaway viene y dice: "Tienes que ayudarme o perdremos la ley". Dije, ¿qué está pasando? Bueno, en medio de la noche, Paul Ryan había puesto una proyección en la regla que decía que no podíamos lidiar con la situación de Yemen con Arabia Saudita. Y todos los activistas de paz se fueron locos. Y, ya saben, un montón de republicanos no iban a votar por la regla. Los demócratas estaban todos en contra de la regla debido a esta proyección. Y tuve que salir y encontrar a algunos demócratas para ayudar a los republicanos a pasar esa regla. Y si no hubiéramos hecho eso esa noche, esa mañana, no tendríamos una ley agrícola porque habíamos estado engañados en el cierre y nunca hubiéramos conseguido hacer esto. Y atrapé el diablo, y todavía estoy atrapando el diablo de los activistas de paz y los otros demócratas que me dijeron que debía votar por esta ley porque estaban molestos porque querían, whatever. Así que era solo una cosa. Es como lo dijo Winston Churchill, solo una cosa tras otra, ya saben. Pero de todos modos, lo logramos. Y no es lo mejor, pero al menos tienes algo en el que puedes contar y sabes lo que es y sabes, ya saben, lo llevas al banco por lo que sea que valga. Entonces, ya saben, nos metimos en estas cosas comerciales y, ya saben, hicieron el pago de facilitación de mercado, lo cual la gente necesitaba. Lo entiendo, pero, ya saben, hemos, he gastado veintisiete años tratando de sacar al gobierno de la agricultura, ya saben, no hacerlo más allá, y estamos en la dirección equivocada. Y ahora tenemos otra en la mesa. Así que toda esa historia, ya saben, la gente recibió el pago el año pasado. Creo que todo el mundo lo apreciaba. No hizo que la gente estuviera bien, ya saben, pero ayudó. Así que ahora, ya saben, estamos enfrentando incluso una situación de peor precio. Y ahora tienes el problema del clima en esta parte del mundo. Así que están haciendo otro pago de facilitación. Así que tal vez empiece con eso, donde está. Alguien ha convencido a su economista y al otro líder del USDA que la cosa más importante sobre este pago de facilitación es que no afecta a las decisiones de planificación. Así que se formaron este esquema, que en mi opinión afectará más las decisiones de planificación que cualquier otra cosa que pudieran haber hecho. Ya saben, y he estado diciendo a Sensky y Purdue y Northy que ustedes están cometiendo un enorme error con lo que están haciendo aquí. Y todo lo que tienes que hacer es esperar tres semanas y la planificación terminará y no tendrás que pasar por todo esto. Pero ellos tienen esto en la cabeza, que tienen que hacer esta fórmula. Y creo que es parte de su reacción a lo que pasó en el último pago de facilitación donde las harinas obtuvieron un dólar sesenta y cinco y la maíz obtuvo un centavo y la harina obtuvo 16 centavos, o lo que sea. Así que hay mucha desilusión sobre eso. Tuvieron mucha flaca sobre eso. Así que ahora están formando un esquema que ustedes no podrían averiguar. No me importa si eres el genio económico mundial o cualquiera. La forma en que han conseguido esta cosa juntada, nadie podrá averiguar lo que están haciendo. Así que lo que van a hacer es que van a entrar y firmar sus acres planteados. Y así que la única cosa que puedo decirles por seguro es que esto va a basarse en los acres planteados. Y si no plantas, no vas a obtener este pago. Así que ese es uno de los primeros problemas que tienes que hacer. Entonces, si tuviera preventiva plantación, ya saben, ¿vas a obtener más de eso? O ¿vas a obtener más de la facilitación de mercado? Ya saben, quién sabe. Así que ese es el primer problema. Pero eso es, ya saben, creo que está bastante solidificado. No te pagarán si no plantas. Y así han ampliado la lista de cultivos que van a calificar para los acres planteados. Y así, por ejemplo, incluso la alfalfa se considerará plantada. Y eso es algo que no ha pasado en el pasado, donde la alfalfa fue descartada de muchas de estas cosas. Pero puedes plantar alfalfa, puedes plantar solo todo, ya saben, canola, maíz húmedo, semilla de mostaza, semilla de trigo, batidos, ya saben. Así que puedes plantar solo todo y considerarlo como acres planteados. Así que entonces, en el proceso, lo que van a hacer es que van a volver y van a averiguar la historia en ese condado de cuál es la relación de los cultivos entre ellos. Así que van a volver y no es claro si es un año o tres años o lo que sea, pero van a averiguar, está bien, en el condado de Lyon, históricamente plantaste el 50% de las harinas, el 50% de la maíz, y eso es lo que va a ser, está bien? Y eso probablemente esté cerca de lo que es, ya saben. Así que van a averiguar lo que es que han plantado en esos condados. Entonces van a tomar el rendimiento APH, el rendimiento anual del condado, multiplicado por aquellos acres. Y no es claro en ese punto dónde podrían usar los acres planteados conectados versus el histórico, pero eso no se ha trabajado. Pero de todos modos, lo que van a hacer es que van a formar un pago por acre para ese condado basado en lo que fueron sus plantaciones históricas en ese condado y basado en cuánto daño creen que fue hecho a esa especie de cultivo. Así que si tienes maíz, ya saben, van a decir que no tiene mucho daño de estos acuerdos comerciales. Si tienes harina, va a haber daño significativo. Harina, daño significativo, y demás. Así que no es claro lo que van a hacer con eso. Han habido algunas rumorías, va a ser dos dólares para las harinas, ya saben, diez centavos para la maíz, sesenta y tres centavos para la harina. Pero están negando que ese informe sea verdad. Están afirmando que no es verdad. Y así no puedes averiguar para ellos lo que van a hacer. Pero van a formar un pago por acre para el condado de Lyon o el condado de Lincoln o el condado de Pipestone o lo que sea. Ahora, puedo garantizarles que estos pagos van a ser significativamente diferentes de condado a condado. Y así van a tener otro problema donde los agricultores en un condado van a obtener cinco dólares, diez dólares por acre menos que el condado del próximo. Así que eso va a causar problemas, creo. Y la gente va a, ya están empezando a cuestionar por qué están usando el rendimiento anual del condado y por qué no están usando el historial, ya saben, toda esta otra cosa. Así que no sé. Así que los economistas que han mirado esto piensan que, ya saben, estamos hablando, he visto los rango desde 25 dólares por acre a 100 dólares por acre o más. Y no creo que nadie tenga idea de lo que es, excepto que va a ser en tus acres planteados y va a ser tanto por acre y no lo sabrás hasta agosto, probablemente. Y luego están hablando de hacer el 50% del pago en agosto. Y luego van a ver lo que pasa. Y si sienten que el trabajo no ha dañado a ustedes, no van a hacer el resto de esos pagos. Así que van a decidir en diciembre si necesitan hacer más. Y luego van a decidir de nuevo en enero si necesitan hacer más que eso. Así que, ya saben, tienen esto configurado. Así que la idea es que esto no se supone que afecte a la planificación, está bien? Así que esta cosa, debido a lo que están haciendo aquí, va a afectar más a la planificación que cualquier otra cosa que puedan hacer porque su pago va a basarse en lo que plantan. Ya saben, y así me dices que la gente no va a cambiar de harina a maíz para obtener este pago, si pueden conseguirlo. Ya saben, solo creo que eso es lo que va a pasar. Así que vamos a terminar con más harinas que no necesitamos, ya saben, debido a este programa. Así que dije, ¿por qué no esperas tres semanas? Si esperas tres semanas, no necesitarán hacer ninguna de estas cosas porque todo el mundo va a ser plantado o no plantado. Vamos a pasar las líneas de deadline y, ya saben, incluso Chuck Grassley está de acuerdo conmigo en eso, que esto es lo que deberían hacer, pero no escucharán. Ya saben, así que están atentos a hacer este programa. Y el mensaje que quiero tener que comprendan es que no tengo nada que ver con esto. Ya saben, estoy en serio. No tengo, esto es un acuerdo de administración. Y todo lo que hacen es hablar conmigo y escuchan conmigo mientras escuchan lo que digo. No creo que realmente escuchen a mí, pero este no es mi llamado. Este es su llamado. Esto es completamente la administración, su decisión completamente, y están quitando este dinero del CCC. Ahora, la mayoría de ustedes probablemente no entiendan sobre el CCC, pero esto es algo que se estableció en 1939 en la depresión. Y es un fondo de dinero obligatorio que el fondo de basura que el secretario tiene. Y puede gastar hasta 30 billones a año de ese fondo si decide que necesita gastarse. Así que ahí es donde están formando este dinero, del CCC. Y tienen suficiente dinero ahí para hacerlo, aunque el dinero va a ser devuelto y vamos a pagar el interés a China, lo cual creo que es un poco estúpido, que vamos a devolver dinero de China, pagar el interés a ellos para que podamos arreglar el problema que creamos con China. Ya saben, no sé. De todos modos, así que ahí es donde están obteniendo el dinero. Esto se ha hecho completamente por el secretario de la administración. El Congreso no tiene ningún impacto en esto. No tenemos nada que decir sobre ello. Y, ya saben, he gastado una hora en el teléfono con Northy ayer. Northy es el subsecretario de FSA, programas agrícolas, seguro de cultivo. Pasé por todo esto con él, igual que hice con usted, diciéndole que creo que están cometiendo un error. No parecía tener mucho impacto. Así que están avanzando con esto. Quería que pudieras decirles que esto va a ser 50 dólares por acre, ya saben, entonces podrían tomar una decisión. Vas a tu agente de seguro de cultivo, puedes averiguar, ya saben, cuál es la situación preventiva de la plantación y, ya saben, tratar de averiguar qué tiene sentido. Pero no lo sabrás. Está bien, así que ese es el pago de facilitación. Así que ahora el otro problema es que tenemos una ley de desastre. Y eso ha estado pasando durante los últimos, no sé, seis meses al menos. Han estado juntando esta ley de desastre y he estado apoyándolos en esto. Esto no tenía nada que ver con nosotros. Esta ley de desastre era para el sur. Y usted piensa que estás en problemas. No estás cerca de los problemas que estas personas en Georgia y Alabama y Florida están debido a lo que les ha pasado en los últimos tres años, especialmente el año pasado. Y esta ley de desastre, la necesitaban en febrero o en enero. Y yo diría que el 25% de esos agricultores están fuera de negocios porque no hicimos esto. Ya saben, así que han estado arrastrando esto. El Senado ha estado luchando entre sí y Trump ha estado en contra. Y así finalmente, el jueves pasado, los republicanos en el Senado lograron que Trump aceptara un acuerdo. Así que se formaron con una ley de desastre de 19 billones de dólares que pasaron, 95 a cuatro o algo así, el jueves pasado. Pero el problema es que la Casa estaba ya fuera de la ciudad. Así que lo enviaron a la Casa, ya estamos fuera. Así que intentaron presentarlo con el consentimiento unanimo. Y lo que eso significa es que la Casa solo aceptaría al Senado, que no cuestionaríamos nada, simplemente lo aprobaríamos unanimamente, aunque nadie estaba allí. Y Nancy Pelosi, a su mérito, aceptó eso porque sabía cuánto problema tenían estos tipos en el sur y algunas personas en esta parte del mundo también. Así que aceptó, aunque no estuvimos de acuerdo con todo lo que estaba allí y demás, aceptó que se presentara con el consentimiento unanimo. Y así también McCarthy, de la parte republicana. Pero tenían este yahoo de Freedom Caucus que se levantó y se odió. Y así, así que él odió a este tipo, Chip Roy, que es un freshman de Texas, que solía ser el jefe de personal de Ted Cruz. Así que si eso te dice algo. Aprendió su agricultura de la Fundación Heritage. Pero de todos modos, así que él se odió. Y así lo lograron, que lo aceptaran para no volver a Washington. Esto fue el martes. Y así lo presentaron de nuevo, o no, el lunes, lo presentaron de nuevo ayer. Y luego este Massey de Kentucky, se levantó y se odió. Así que ahora van a intentarlo de nuevo hoy. No sé qué va a pasar, pero cuando regresemos a Washington el martes, si no lo han pasado entonces creo que la Casa lo pasará. Y así la ley de desastre será legal. Ahora, así que este fue un proyecto para el sur debido a que muchas de las cultivos en el sur no tenían seguro de cultivo. Y necesitaban esto para sobrevivir. Así que en el medio de esto y de no hacerlo, tuvimos el inundación en el Illinois o el Río Missouri y demás, y lo que está pasando aquí. Y Chuck Grassley se involucró y dijo que tenemos que tener dinero para nuestro desastre, aunque la mayoría de ello está cubierto por seguro de cultivo. Ya saben, así que nuestra parte del mundo es diferente del sur porque todo el mundo tiene seguro de cultivo, básicamente. Y, ya saben, estás cubierto por plantación rentable o lo que sea. Lo único que no estaba cubierto fueron los garbanzos de grano y el grano que fue destruido por este inundación. Ahora, podrías haber comprado seguro. Lo compré con las compañías de seguro y podrías haber comprado seguro en los garbanzos y en el grano, pero la mayoría de la gente no lo hizo. Ya saben, y fue bastante barato, ya saben. Pero de todos modos, así que lo que terminaron haciendo es poner en esta ley de desastre que si perdiste grano o garbanzos vas a ser pagado por el gobierno por tu pérdida. La otra cosa que pusieron ahí, y esta es la otra arruga que va a ir en tensión con los pagos de facilitación de mercado, pusieron ahí que van a poder agregar la preventiva de la plantación hasta un máximo de 90%. Así que podrían tomar tu preventiva de la plantación, que creo que es el 60% en la maíz y el 55% en las harinas, o viceversa. Está bien, el 55% en la maíz, el 60% en las harinas. Ahora el secretario tendría la autoridad para elevarlo a 90%. Y así una cosa que Northy me dijo que van a hacer, si tienes seguro de cultivo y tienes preventiva de la plantación, lo que van a hacer es que van a hacer que las compañías de seguro de cultivo hagan eso. Así que van a formar algo y van a decirle a las agencias de seguro de cultivo, está bien, si tuviste preventiva de la plantación, podrías elevarlo a 75% o podrías elevarlo... Podrían llegar a 90%. Y no van a hacer eso a través del gobierno, van a hacer eso a través del seguro de cultivo, está bien? Pero no saben qué van a hacer. Saben que será más de 55 y que será menos de 90, pero no saben qué es. Así que ese es otro problema en todo este toma de decisiones que tienes que hacer y no lo sabrás. Y no creo que lo sepas pronto qué es. Así que puedo decirte, al hablar con Northy ayer, que no va a ser el 90%. Puedo decirles eso. Ya saben, tal vez 75, no sé. Y así si no tienes seguro de cultivo, esto es otro punto de contención. Pueden pagar ustedes hasta el 70% en preventiva de la plantación, aunque no compraran seguro. Ahora, eso no es justo, pero eso es lo que hicieron. Ya saben, y Grassley hizo esto. Y Grassley debería saber mejor, por Dios. Ya saben, así que esto está causando peligro moral con el seguro de cultivo si empezamos a pagar por personas que no compran seguro. Pero, y una vez más, no saben qué van a hacer. Puede ser el 70%, podría ser el 50%, podría ser, quién sabe. Así que esas son las decisiones que van a tomar. Esos pagos, si no tienes seguro de cultivo, esos pagos preventivos van a ser made por la oficina de FSA. Así que tendrán que entrar y aplicar en la FSA para obtener un pago si no tienen seguro de cultivo. Así que una vez más, el Senado hizo este proyecto sin escuchar a nosotros en la Casa. Así que suena como si estuviera arreglando la culpa, pero es la verdad honesta. Esos tipos escribieron este proyecto. No tenía un puto cosa que decir sobre ello, excepto apoyar lo que estaba allí para los surtanos. Y, ya saben, la única opción que tengo ahora es que podría volver el martes y podría odiar y tirar esto en un comité de conferencia. Pero quién diablos sabe qué saldría si alguna vez pudiera sacar algo de él. Así que no creo que voy a hacer eso. Pero, ya saben, podría decirle a la gente, el Senado podría arruinar una parada de uno en una carrotera, ya saben. Y lo han hecho de nuevo, ya saben. Así que lo que han hecho aquí, en mi opinión, es que han impactado significativamente las decisiones de planificación. Te han puesto en una situación imposible para tratar de averiguar qué diablos hacer. Y, ya saben, el consejo que recibí de algunos de los top economistas fue, bueno, lo que ustedes deben hacer es plantar lo que creen que es la mejor economía para su agricultura y no preocuparse por lo que el gobierno te va a pagar. Y eso puede ser buen consejo, no sé. Pero probablemente lo que hagas, vas a querer que hayas tomado una decisión diferente cuando descubras lo que realmente pasa. Así que, ya saben, puedo decirles esto, que si el comité de la Agencia de Agricultura escribiera este facilitación de mercado y si el comité de la Agencia de Agricultura escribiera esta ley de desastre, esto no sería lo que estás enfrentando, garantizo ustedes. Pero no fuimos básicamente consultores. Así que, ya saben, con toda esa buena noticia, ¿qué me falta? Así que es una escala de mierda, lo que diablos van a hacer. Y no creo que Northy haga una decisión en las próximas semanas en ninguna de estas cosas. Y si lo hacen, probablemente no me lo dijera, seguramente no les dirá. Probablemente se le haga información, así que yo estaría escéptico sobre lo que lees en Internet o en cualquier otro lugar porque no creo que nadie realmente sepa. Y habrá muchas noticias falsas saliendo. Pero de todos modos, así que estoy aquí para tomar consejos, por lo que sea que valga. No estoy seguro de que alguien me escuche, pero estoy dispuesto a incluirme a su favor. He estado incluyéndome a su favor. He estado discutiendo sobre esto por algún tiempo, estos pagos de facilitación. Creo que se han arruinado y hay mejores formas de hacer esto, pero de todos modos. Así que, y van a, van a haber pagos para los vacas. No estamos seguros de cuánto, pero habrá tanto pago de vaca, tanto, incluso para la caballa, la leche, habrá tanto pago de 100 kilos de vaca para la leche. Así que habrán otros pagos hechos en este último 16 billones de dólares, además de los cultivos. Y luego también van a comprar cosas, ya saben, como el pollo sobrepeso o la leche o lo que sea. En una ocasión Trump dijo que vamos a gastar el total de 16 billones comprando productos. Y luego alguien lo explicó que no había manera de hacer eso. Así que cambió eso ese tarde. De todos modos, está bien. ¿Tienen una pregunta? Así que tendrán que hablar porque soy un poco tonto, pero haré lo mejor que puedo.
Está bien, bueno, si tienen una pregunta, por favor, déjense de nuevo aquí. Este será el micrófono que usaremos. Tenemos algunos aquí para empezar. Solo pedimos que sean un poco cognizantes de las ubicaciones de la cámara cuando se establecen una línea si uno comienza a formar. Así que le dejaremos a un par de ustedes para algunas preguntas.
Buenas tardes, Congreso. Gracias por estar aquí. Soy Don Buell de Tyler. Y supongo que estoy curioso si pensamos que podemos pasar este USMCA. Los exportes son importantes, creo, para todos en esta sala. Y me gustaría su comentario sobre eso.
Sí, creo que va a pasar. Parece haber movimiento que es positivo. El Comité de las maneras y de comportamiento va a México la próxima semana para examinar los estándares de trabajo.
The Ways and Means Committee is going to Mexico next week to examine the labor standards, which means they're trying to figure out how to be able to sell this to the rest of the Democrats. So I'm optimistic. I think this will get done this fall. You know, I don't think it'll get done before August recess. It might, but I'm more likely be September or October. But frankly, the agreement is not much different than the current NAFTA. So the fact that NAFTA is still in place, you know, I don't think we're really losing a whole lot, you know, if it gets late a couple of months. There is some improvements over NAFTA, but not significant. And it depends on what sector of agriculture you're talking about, so. But I think it's going to get done. And I've supported it. The minute it came out, I told the administration, I told Lighthizer, I had lunch with him, I said, if you don't screw up the ag stuff, I'll support it. And they didn't screw it up, they made it a little better, and I immediately came out in favor of it. And I have talked to Pelosi, as they've asked me to do, to tell her to bring it up. But I just would warn people that she is the best vote-cutter in the House. And part of why she's not charging to bring it up is she doesn't think the votes are there right now. But we're working through that, and I think she understands this needs to get passed. And so like I say, I'm optimistic, and I think I'll do whatever I can to grease the skids and get her done. You know, we don't need that problem on top of everything else.
Hi, Congressman. I'm a dairy farmer on my family farm. My mom and dad bought 1945. What I don't understand is how the new dairy price program of 950, when we got paid 1330 in December and 1330 in January base price, and I talked to Katie in your office, so she figured out my deficiency payment for January, and the top price that you're using is 1680. How do you come up with that when we're getting paid 1330, so you've got to add 360 on to that or 350?
Well, you're dairy farming in the wrong state. And that's a flippant answer, but the problem is, we have such low Class 1 utilization, and we're a manufacturing market. The Upper Midwest market is a manufacturing market. We have very little Class 1. And so our prices are a buck and two 100-weight below prices in other places because of, you know, very low utilization. Unfortunately, and there's no other way to do this, and I knew this at the time we did the program, but it's the best we could do. This program is a national program. So they compute the feed costs nationally, and they compute the price nationally. And when they come up with this margin, it's not based on Minnesota, it's based on your national price. And so what's happening is we're getting penalized like a buck 100-weight in Minnesota from what they're getting other places because of our market. There was no other way to do this. I mean, it, you know, it has to be a national program. So I just think that people need to step back and look at this in the right way. And I don't, I think too many people, dairy farmers and crop farmers, have looked at things based on what they're going to get out of the government. And that's the wrong way to look at it. And it's especially the wrong way to look at it on dairy. So what we have done with this 950 margin is we have guaranteed you a price, and in the case of Minnesota, we're basically guaranteeing you a $17 price. You know, from what I'm seeing from the economics of the situation. So if you've got 200 cows and you take the 950, you know, you can lock in a gross income, you know, of around $850,000 a year. And that's the way you need to look at this. You need to go in and buy this coverage, you can then take this to the bank and say, okay, I know I'm going to get $850,000 on my operation, no matter what happens, and if the market's better, I'm going to get more. But people aren't looking at it that way. They're looking at it, well, how much money is the government going to send me? That's not what this is about. This is about giving you a safety net that your banker can count on, like we do with crop farming. You know, when you buy insurance, you can go in and say, okay, I know I'm going to get this much income because I bought this coverage. So, you know, it's a national program, and that's how come we're in this situation. The other thing that you need to understand is we have a significant amount of people in this country and in Minnesota that can produce milk, they claim, for 14 bucks 100-weight. And that's the other issue. And the people that claim they can produce milk for that are increasing production. You know, so whether they can or not, I'm not, you know, that's their business. But that is an issue that we've tried to deal with by limiting who gets this 950 coverage. That's what we've done.
So the people that claim that, if you go to their farms, they're going to have illegal people working for them, and I guarantee you, they're illegal.
They probably do.
What has happened is, we don't have a level playing field to play on anymore.
Well, I can't do anything about that.
It's a big hill.
I can't do anything about that. I've tried to get immigration reform. You've got people that are never going to come together on that issue, and so it is what it is. But, you know, you've got the hog operation, not the hog farmers, but Hormel and Jennie O, they've got illegal people in their operations, too.
That is correct. My second question's going to be concerning the hog operations.
The what?
My second question will be concerning the hog operations. You mentioned paying the hog farmers.
Right.
Okay. First, I want to say, what I come out of my question from the dairy farm is, or for a family dairy farmer in Minnesota, we might as well fold up and go away because this isn't for us anymore.
That's not true. I think this is the best time in my career in politics, at 40 years, to go into dairy farming. This is the best time, if you want to dairy farm, that I say to people, if you're a young guy and you want to do it, this is the time to do it. Because we have a five-year guarantee of gross income that you can buy for almost nothing. We have cows that are selling at 40% of what they're worth. We have barns sitting empty that you can lease. If you want to get into dairying, this is the time to do it. And I can't guarantee that this five-year program is going to be extended, but I can about 90% guarantee tell you that it's going to, and it'll probably be improved in the future. So we have a safety net in place for small farmers. Now, you get above 220 cows, you're on your own. That's the way it works. But I just, I just think this negative stuff, I know it's been terrible, and again, the Senate. This program was available in February, early February of 2018. There was a bill at the time that I tried to get it into, and the Senate objected. And if that bill would have passed, you would have gotten $100,000 from the government in 2018. And the only reason you did it was because the Senate killed it. You know, so that same program now is in effect for '19, but the prices have improved, so you're not going to get as much money. But you would have got 100 grand last year if we'd have got that thing in place. There was no reason not to do it, except the couple senators that didn't understand what they were doing. You know, so I mean, you know, I mean, I'm in a powerful position in agriculture, but I'm not a dictator. You know, I wished I was sometimes, you know, that I could do what I think needs to be done, but, you know, I've got to work with all these other people, so.
Do the state representatives and state senators ever confer with you as a national person to help, you know, get back to us what's going on with you?
Not too much. And I just found out yesterday that the state legislature put in, placed a program to pay part of your premiums on the market facilitation, and they obviously didn't know what they were doing, because they're paying up to 750 cows. And the amount that you have to pay for margin protection over 220 is, there's no way you would ever pay that. So now they've got a program where the state is on the hook to pay for something that doesn't make any sense economically. If they would have just called me, I could have told them, this is a bad idea, but nobody called me, so.
Okay, my last comment is, when you're going to pay the hog farmers, I want you to consider who they are, and I feel sorry for the family hog farmers yet, because the number-one pork kill place in the United States is China. The number two is JBS out of Brazil. Now, on WNYC Radio this last spring or last fall, when this all came about and Trump put all these tariffs upon, he said it's a win-win for China, because they're killing the hogs raised by the USA, shipping them to China, and getting paid the tariffs both ways. Thank you.
Well, I don't know about that, but, you know, that's another factor that I maybe should have. I, in my opinion, the tariffs are the smallest part of these price problems. The number-one problem is China's swine fever. Over 30% of their hogs have been killed, and it may be 50% by the time they're done. So the market for soybeans went away. And while I was in Brazil and Argentina a month ago, there was no buying by China in Brazil and Argentina, because they don't need their meal, they don't need their beans. And that's part of the reason why the soybean merchant has collapsed. It has more to do with that than anything else. That's number one. Number two, we have produced too damn many soybeans. And we've got more soybeans than the market can take, even if China didn't have this problem. So that's overhanging the market. And then you add on top of that the tariffs. So you've got a perfect storm here. And that's, you know, what's going on with these prices. And I, my opinion, and I'm not an economist, I think these prices are down for the long term. I don't see these prices coming back in the next two or three years. I really don't. And I think we're heading into a time that's going to be as worse or as bad as the '80s that we had back in '85, I think, unfortunately. And I hope I'm wrong, but I might not be. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Hi, Representative Peterson. I'm Dale Johnson, a crop and livestock producer. And with the preventative plant acres, what I'd like to see is that final harvest date hay and grazing moved up to like September 1st rather than November. Then we can get some feed, because it's going to be a dire situation with the way the wet fields and the problem of getting feed harvested.
So I'm not, I'm not, say that again?
Well, I'd like to see that preventative plant date where you could pay or graze on preventative planted acres moved up.
Oh, you mean have, being able to harvest them?
Right.
That would take, I believe, that would take legislative action to change that. And you can see how easy it is to get anything done in Congress these days. So I think, you know, we can work on that. I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that we make some other changes, you know, in the law to try to deal with this. I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that, but I will try. So that, that's not a bad idea, and I'll work on it, but it's damn hard to get anything done. And even if we can get it out of the House, that doesn't mean the Senate's going to take it up, you know, so. But that's not a bad idea.
I appreciate your influence on that. Thank you.
Yeah. Huh? I did. It doesn't, it's like talking to the wall, okay? You know, I don't think he has the authority. He's going to tell me, you know, a lot of what, they're blaming their lawyers, okay? They blame their lawyers for this market facilitation fiasco to some extent, and the economists. But, you know, and the lawyers over there, they do screw up a lot of stuff, you know, and I tell the people, maybe the best thing we can do is first kill all the lawyers, and then after that, we can make progress. But anyway, you know, it's, we'll talk to them, but it's, so far, it hasn't done much good, unfortunately. Yes, sir.
Congressman Peterson, Scott Double D, the manager of the Farmers Elevator in Hanley Falls. Like to throw an idea out for discussion. Maybe it's a bad idea, but to consider extending the full payment of crop insurance on planting date a couple of weeks.
Right.
We can still raise good corn, provided we can get it planted right a couple of weeks late. Corn's a large economic engine for our region, for our state, for our country and the world, and maybe it could solve a lot of issues. Thank you.
Well, the planting dates are in the regulations, and as I understand it, I think I'm right about this, they can't change those without doing a rule, which takes 90 days' notice and a whole bunch of other stuff. So I'm not sure, even if they wanted to, they could change those planting dates on a timely basis. We have legislatively before changed those dates, but with, you know, we had to happen to have a bill that we could stick it in. Now, this disaster bill, I mean, if they opened that up, we could put something like this in there. And if they would have had me over in that discussion that went on over in the Senate, I would have told them, you know, to have changed, to look at these planting dates in terms of a way to deal with this, if you're worried about planning decisions. But nobody allowed us into the deal, so. I, you know, not a bad idea.
Jerome Grab, Sandburn, Minnesota. I happened to be reading something the other day about ethanol and the gas production, or the demand, I should say, of it rather than production, but the demand of it. They're projecting it to be going down as we go ahead. So did we lose a lot of export business to China over that?
Over what?
Over the export of ethanol.
Well, that's a lot more complicated question. You know, the ethanol market is being distorted by what's being done in different countries, including the tariffs. You know, we were getting ethanol into South America because of what they were doing. They were sending biodiesel up here because of their government policies in Argentina. I don't know if you ever get ahead of this situation, you know, but the market also puts out signals, and sometimes they need ethanol, and sometimes we need it, and vice versa. You know, we don't want to get in the way of that. So how much, I think a bigger problem with ethanol is what the administration has been doing. They claim they're for E15, but they're mucking up the system with these waivers, and so they haven't done what they're supposed to do. They claim they're doing it, but they're not doing it. This is fake news, you know, so, you know, that would be a bigger help to the ethanol and corn price industry than anything else, if we could just get them to implement the E15 year-round and not screw it up, you know, with these waivers. Because those waivers are not justified, in my opinion, and they're just, they're flouting the law, but, you know, we've sued them, but we can't get a judge to understand what the hell's going on here. So I don't think the exports, one way or the other, are going to solve the ethanol problem, I guess is the bottom line.
The main point was, down the road 20 years, as they go to electric cars and more efficient vehicles, the total demand for gas and ethanol is going to go down.
What about the vehicles? I need a term.
The demand for ethanol and gas is going to, the demand for it's going to get lower because of the electric cars and, I suppose, more efficient vehicles. I don't know.
Well, who knows? I don't think there are going to be a lot of electric cars sold in the 7th district. So it's my take. Yes, sir.
Representative Peterson, my name is Mark Pankinen. I'm a farmer feeder near Lambert, Minnesota, and also represent the Minnesota State Cattlemen. The gentleman, I believe, two previous to myself, had brought up the prevent plant acres and the potential to open it up prior to the traditional November 1st grazing and hay, if we could move it to September 1st. Your response was, it takes a lot to get stuff done in Washington, I understand that. I think you can do this. I think if it could be somehow presented along the emergency hay and grazing, which we've opened up CRP.
I think there's a good chance that we can get them to do that. It makes sense, and I don't know exactly what they have to go through, but they probably got enough time by September 1st to go through the rulemaking if they have to do that. And so I will definitely talk to them about that. But I also want to say to you that in the farm bill, we opened up CRP to grazing every year and hay every other year. So we significantly opened up CRP, and most people don't know that. That, you know, the other thing, we doubled the grassland reserve program. You know what that is?
Yes.
You know, and so we now have 4 million acres, and only a million of it's been used. And you get the grassland reserve payment if you just have grass, and you don't have to do anything with it. All it has to be is pasture, any kind of grass, you can sign it up, you get 20 bucks an acre, and there's no requirement to do anything. You can graze it, hay it, whatever you want. And people are not signing up, and this is a big mistake. You guys are leaving a lot of money on the table that you could be getting. So, you could put all your pasture land in, just go down to your FSA office, and you could sign up any day you want to do it.
We need productivity, and a lot of the makers are really not...
You guys should get into this thing, because it'll make a big difference, you know.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And we're trying to shoot the wolves, but we're not having much luck, so gotta get the governor straightened out.
Representative Peterson, Bob Worth, Lake Benton. I want to thank you very much for taking the time to come down and explain a lot of things. I actually have two questions. First one is, I'm a farmer, but I'm also a mayor of our town. And I am really concerned what's going to happen to our businesses in town, the fertilizer guy, seed guy, you know, all these, all these businesses that rely on agriculture. And if, if things, if the farmers don't have any excess cash to spend in these businesses, we're gonna, our small towns are gonna wipe up. And that's, I like what you explained about, you know, maybe we get a little more for prevent plant, whatever we can get to help our businesses out. I mean, it's, I'm just worried about small towns. We might not have anything left after... I mean, this is the sixth year of agriculture is really suffering, and this is gonna be a big one, and it's gonna just take the, take a toll on them, so, thank you.
Yeah, it, you know, as I've heard from people around the district, apparently in some of these areas, like I guess around here, the companies still have all their fertilizers sitting in the bin, because you've, right? So, there, some of these co-ops and other suppliers are not in the greatest shape either. And there's not gonna be any help for them out of any of these programs that I'm aware of. So, you know, it's, I'm worried about where we're heading with this thing, you know. I was there in the eighties, saw what happened then, and all we can do is try to, you know, do the most help we can to get, get people through it, but... And the other thing, the bankers, you know, they're gonna have some tough decisions to make, too. I think next winter is gonna be hell on wheels, you know, for the bankers. I mean, I had them in my office just three weeks ago. You know, they said most people got financed this year, but they're very concerned about what's gonna happen next year, especially given the prices and given what the weather has been and so forth. So, we'll just have to do the best we can, but they've already increased the levels of Chapter 12 bankruptcy, tried to do some things there to help things out. That's not the greatest idea in the world to help people go bankrupt, but, you know, it might be a part of what you have to do. We're also putting money into the mitigation, or the people that mediation people and the other mental health people. We've had a lot of increase in suicides in agriculture, especially in the South. So, you know, we've put more money into some of those programs, but we need a price, and we need good weather. That's the best thing we can do.
But, is farmers get money in their pocket, no matter through a government program?
They spend it, yeah.
They spend it, so that's, I mean, we don't keep it. We spend it. And I was, I'm old enough to know what the eighties were like. I lived the eighties. Second question is, could you explain a little bit on the new program of the ARC and the PLC and the new, and the new farm bill? I know we're going to, it's changed some. I'd like you to explain that, because we have to sign up for that sometime this...
Yeah, you've got till...
Late summer.
Yeah, I think it's September first or something.
Thank you.
We did, we were, I tried to raise the target prices, and it was unsuccessful. But what I did do is I raised the loan rates. And I don't know if any of you have noticed that, but we did have a fifteen percent increase in loan rates, and that happened because of me, and I insisted on it. That was the one thing I insisted on. It's not a magic bullet, but it helps. It's a little extra money you can get for your cash flow and so forth, and so those loan rates have been raised for the first time in twenty years. So, the biggest other change that we made in PLC and ARC is that you can go back and forth, you can go back and forth every year. So, you can go in PLC one year, ARC the next, back and forth, and you'll be able to make that decision every year. Under the old program, it was a five-year deal, and you were locked in. So, that's the other big change we made to give you some more flexibility. But, in this part of the world, I'm expecting most everybody is gonna go with PLC, you know. I'm thinking, but I could be wrong. Jim?
Colin, thank you. Jim Nichols. Farmers need to understand, and some misinformation is that all they have to do is call their crop insurance agent today or tomorrow, and then they're automatically enrolled in the program for preventive planting. But, they can continue to go ahead and plant corn if they want to, and hopefully we'll have a good week this week, and we can get some corn planted. Beans are seven dollars and fifty-six in Marshall yesterday. I mean, there's, there's no money in raising beans, and we don't need them anyhow. We need to raise some more corn.
Right.
That would certainly help our co-ops, and they've always been there to support us, and now we need to help them. The other thing is back to the November one date for being able to get any of that preventive plant. You plant a cover crop on the preventive plant, and you can bale it. You can't chop it. But if you can move that ahead at least one month, which is what CRP is, it would help a lot. And I know you've talked to Northy about that, but the other speakers have spoke to that. Move that date back to September one would be great, and that helps our livestock producers. And for the farmers, call your crop insurance agent. That's all you gotta do. You're signed up. If you want to plant corn, plant corn.
Yeah, I thank you. I should've mentioned that. I was not aware of that, but you could... Apparently, you should sign up for prevented planting with your crop insurance agent, even if you're not gonna do it. And you can sign up, and then you can decide later whether you're gonna, whether you're, you'll find out later whether you plant or not. Is that correct?
That's correct, and you don't have to. A lot of crop insurance agents and ones here, they're gonna sign up their customers anyhow, because you're crazy if you don't sign up. And you don't have to decide how many acres of corn you're gonna prevent plant. Just call your agent, he automatically signs you up, the claim is filed, and then you can do what you want. So, but tomorrow's the deadline for that call.
Yeah, and then they've got, you know, these issues where if you got an enterprise unit, you gotta plant twenty acres in every enterprise or twenty percent, and, and those kind of issues, you know, and it just all makes it more complicated to try to figure out what the hell to do, so...
But you got till June twenty-fifth on those enterprise units, so don't worry about that now. And all you gotta have is twenty percent in two sections, so...
It's apparently an issue, because I've gotten calls from a number of people about that, so, I don't know. Anything else we haven't covered? Yes, sir?
I'm Kelly Nichols. I'm a crop insurance agent, Colin. I've already got three text messages after your announcement that we could go from fifty-five to ninety percent on prevent plant payments.
On what?
When you mentioned that we could go from fifty-five to ninety percent within the disaster bill on prevent plant payments.
Well, we don't know. They can go up to ninety percent. We don't know what they're gonna do.
I understand that. Is that actually wording in the, if the disaster bill passes, is that wording in the disaster bill, or is it up to the Ag Secretary to announce that number?
It's, it's up to the Ag Secretary to announce what number it is, up to ninety percent.
Do you think it's going to be increased?
Yes.
Do you want to make a guess?
No.
Can I give you the name of about seventy-five farmers that would like to know that number?
Well, we could go to Las Vegas, too, you know, so... What's that? Uh, that's a good question, but every county, fifty-one counties in Minnesota are disaster counties already, okay? Including Lyon County. In my opinion, all of the counties in Southwest are already disaster. So, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, as far as I know. In fact, there's, there's counties that are disaster that have had no disaster whatsoever. How the hell they got in there, I don't know, but, so, you know, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. So, you know, I talked to Northy yesterday. There's no question they're gonna raise that. My guess, and don't hold me to this, but I'm guessing they're gonna go in the middle. They're probably gonna go seventy, seventy-five percent, you know, I'm guessing, if you have insurance. But, who knows what they'll do, you know? So, you're just gonna have to look at your operation and do the best you can. That's all you can do, I guess. Yes, Jim?
Colin, can you make a guess? We're gonna get a payment for every acre we plant, too. Thank God for that. Make a guess on what that might be.
The facilitation payments?
Yes.
Well, I don't know. I read this morning, you know, if, we don't know what numbers they're going to use. I think this two-dollar number on soybeans was actually a real number, and when it got put in the press, they backed off. So, if it's two dollars, and if it's seven cents for corn, which is what I saw, you know, what they've... So, what you're talking about is, if you're a county that's fifty-fifty, corn, soybeans, so, and your county yield is, what, forty-five acre, forty-five bushels? You know, fifty bushels to make it simpler. So, say your county yield is fifty bushels, and you're fifty-fifty county, you know, so you're talking, you know, what, fifty bushels at, what, eight bucks, seven bucks, what, whatever the... I don't know what number they're gonna use, but say it's eight dollars, fifty bushels is four hundred dollars an acre, right?
Yep.
So, that's what they're gonna do. They're gonna multiply that out, and then they're gonna translate that into a county. So, if you, if you're fifty percent soybeans and that's four hundred bucks an acre, and if you're fifty percent corn and that's zero, then you're talking two hundred bucks. Now, you know, I don't think it's gonna be two hundred dollars, but it could be a hundred.
That'd be forever acre that we plant.
Right, so, depending on what you plant, or for example, if you plant alfalfa. You turn your whole farm into alfalfa, you'd still get a payment.
Because it's county average, it don't matter what we plant, how many acres of corn or beans, it's a per-acre payment on all...
You can put in canola, you can put in oats, you can put in...
Corn.
Whatever you want, you know, to get that payment, so, I don't know. It's, you guys are smarter than I am, and you've got, you can't get in the field, so you got a lot of time to sit around and think, which I can attest to, because I've been getting all these calls from guys. But, anyway. How we doing here? Well, thank you very much, all of you. I appreciate it. I'm gonna turn it back over to the emcee here, and Kent, we appreciate you being here. He's been feeding me some information. Are you a real economist, or are you, you got a degree?
No, I got a degree.
You're, you're kinda like me. You're a half-baked economist, right? Anyway, Kent does a great job, and thanks to Lynn Kettleson, and, oh, we got one more question.
Probably can't see me, so I won't hold it against you. You know, in Ag, we employ one out of twelve people in the United States. If thirty percent of the farmers do prevent plant, John Deere already announced twenty percent production decrease for the second year in a row. Is Congress working on anything for anybody outside of farming? So, what I mean by outside of farming is actual farmers, so Ag retailers...
No.
Wholesale...
No.
Equipment.
No.
I mean, to me, that's something that we're getting to the point where that needs to be considered.
Historically, we've never done that. And so, given what's going on, it's tough to set a new precedent, set a new program. I think there's some validity that these folks in these rural communities have been hurt by these trade agreements, probably more than farmers have. But, it's just not been something we've done. So, at this point, there's been no talk about that. I have raised it in some of the farm bill discussions about whether we ought to be thinking about more than just farmers, but as of right now, I've heard no discussion about it.
To me, the scary thing is, is it's not, it's not a Southwest Minnesota deal right now. It's nationwide.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah.
And it's, it's, it's real, and the discussions need to, at least to start to happen. I mean, I, we all know that it's not gonna happen overnight, and it could happen in a year or two years from now, but I don't want to happen what happened to GM in two thousand and eight happen in Ag. And looking forward, that's, that's a real scenario.
Well, we'll keep an eye on it, and we will be talking about this kind of thing. But again, these bills that we're talking about did not come through my committee. You know, generally, the only thing we have jurisdiction over is the farm bill. You know, when I got the farm bill done in December, I said, I worked very hard to make sure that I had nothing to do when I was chairman, because that's the reality of the situation, you know. Once you got the farm bill done, you basically oversight, you know, watching them on implementation, trying to get them to do the right kind of things, and beyond that, waiting for the next farm bill. So, that's kind of where we're at. Whenever you have a disaster bill, it gets done in the appropriations committee. So, all of a sudden, you got people putting this together that have no clue what they're doing. And that's part of the problem. And then you get the Senate involved, that's even a bigger problem, you know. So, anyway, thank you all very mu... Whoa, we've got one more, and I'm gonna hang it up, so, yes, sir?
Congressman Peterson, I'm a beginning farmer in Lincoln County, and I've struggled a little bit with farming or crop insurance costs. So, if I don't farm outside of a section, my premium is almost double what an enterprise unit is. Now, that would be great for, you know, you said earlier it's a good opportunity for people to start. You were talking more to Derry, but it'd be great for me if I could cut my costs on that. And then, the second problem I'm running into, as a beginning farmer, I don't have a proven yield, so I get stuck with the county average, and the land I am renting is capable of more than the county average, but I'm still stuck with the county average yield.
We, we, you know, I think we understand most of what you're saying, and we have, you know, developed these beginning farmer programs, which have helped significantly. We have helped with crop insurance that wasn't there before, programs to help you guys get started. We haven't been able to put everything in there that we want, you know, we've tried, but, you know, it's, it's like again...
Appreciate if you keep trying. I appreciate anything you do.
And then part of it is it somewhat gets hijacked by people that have other fish to fry, okay? That want to take these programs and turn them into some kind of do-gooder thing, and therefore, the money's not available for the real farmers, you know. So, we got some of that going on. We try to limit that as much as possible, but we get it, and, you know... Talk to Grant and write that stuff down, and we'll make sure we don't forget about it. And Grant Herfindall over here, who now works for me. Grant was the state director of FSA for a while. Before that, he worked Meeker County, Douglas County, and Grant, no, Polk, Pope County, okay. So, he's got a long history of working at FSA at the county level, at the state level. He knows his stuff, and he helps me from, keeps me from doing too many stupid things when I get off on a tangent. And he's available if you need somebody to talk to. He farms right north of Benson, and pardon? And he's, works out of the Wilmer office, so you can get ahold of him. And Meg Loagre, who runs our Marshall office, is back here. I think most of you in this area know Meg. She's been with us a long time, and she's also available if you have something that you want to talk to us about or get information to me. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate it, and good day.
Just want to say thank you a couple more times, once again, to our broadcast partners, Titan Machinery and Ag Country, Farm Credit Services, for joining us here in the broadcast today on KMHL. Big thank you to everybody for coming, and of course, Bello Caccina for hosting this event here today. Don't forget, they do have that, that pasta bar and salad bar in there for lunch if you want to continue the conversation. Thank you again, everybody, for coming, and have a great day and a nice weekend.